There's is gonna be a little bit smaller. There's three tennis courts, so we'll have equivalent about four basketball courts plus some extra room.
Exciting things for our district, thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Last meeting, Dr. Carlin presented the kind of summary about our 2017-2018 calendar work with committee. So tonight, I just wanted to touch base on a few different items and then ultimately have the board vote on accepting the recommendation from the calendar committee. So through that process, we've had kind of three bigger issues that have come up to the calendar that weren't necessarily recognized by the calendar committee. One of those was lots of questions on how this would impact our classified staff because typically they don't work necessarily every one of our in-service days. So with us incorporating that collaboration time in the in-service, there've been questions about are we gonna reduce their number of days, cutting those days? And ultimately that would get into their pockets and that was never the intention of developing the calendar with half-days. It was always to increase the amount of collaboration time that teachers would have. So I can assure the board now that we worked on the classified calendar and it will be the same number of days that they currently have, which is 175. That will be mixed with the starting date for them in addition to an approximate of working basically every other one. So they'll work a full day on those half-days half of the time, if that makes sense. Another issue that has kind of come up is about lunchtime and some of our nutrition staff. We have about 50 employees that work through nutrition and again typically on half-days, we don't serve lunch. So we've talked about that, certainly serving lunch to our kids eight more times is important and we're gonna be able to do that as well. And that's gonna be, it may look a little differently, there might be some times where they're gonna eat in the classroom and/or cafeterias. It's really gonna be up to what those buildings can handle in terms of that scheduling because we're reducing the day by half. Okay, and then lastly is our schedule with Garfield Early Childhood Center. It's a half-day program, so if you kept everything equal the way it is, those afternoon kids would be shorted on the half-days that we have. So on four of those days, it will look exactly like it has this year, morning kids will attend on those days. But on the other four, they'll flip-flop that calendar and so we'll have afternoon kids attending in the morning and the morning kids won't. There's still the equal time for both sets of kids. Questions?
President, I'd like to move that we approve the 2017-18 school calendar as presented. Any discussion? I would just like to say that I think we need to be very attentive in this next year to listen to what our staff and the community and families and students have to say about this change. Because I really would like to see it not be disruptive to families and to staff in trying to arrange things for their own families. So I think we need to kind of keep track of that and really consider that and how we go forward from this next year. So I hope we could get more information moving next year as we're seeing the impact as we go through the year.
Give us some examples of impact, what do you think?
Whether it comes up being children that are at home alone or unsupervised, staff that have to have difficulty making arrangements for their own children. Maybe with older children increasing, maybe there's been these type of problems because they're not supervised. I mean, I really appreciate arranging for a lot of lunches for the students because I think a lot of students really depend on that or whatever that. But I think there's some broader considerations too.
Sure, and you know, this does meet all the requirements of the traditional calendar, but it is different than traditional calendars that we use in the past. And so there'll be some, I don't know, learning curve, I suppose, in terms of challenges like I mentioned with these three things that were, you know, necessarily, that come up through the process. But it's going to be, you know, it's gonna be things that we'll address and certainly make note of. But also we'll be asking staff for their input in terms of how successful that collaboration time has been and those kinds of things. As that calendar committee goes to prepare for the next year's calendar as well.
I think that other part is whether the staff are able to make good use of that time that's available and how they feel about that, so.
Absolutely, yeah, that's a real important piece and, you know, we're in the process of developing long-range plan for our professional development too. And this certainly allows us some flexibility in order to get people together and do those kinds of things maybe that we haven't had in the past. So, you know, we want this to be successful certainly and having time to plan and prep. And it's nice thing about the board taking action on this so early is I think this is probably one of the earliest times that we've had our calendar approved. So it'll give us lots of time to prepare for that.
Thank you. I'm also up next for the retention committee. So I'll just give you a little bit of information, this committee is really in the infant stages. I've talked several different times to the board about our teacher shortage, lots of things that we're trying with recruiting and certainly the number of separations we have. So we've really started to take a look at our retention of our current employees and what we can do to improve or decrease the number of separations that we have in our school district. So these individuals that are listed up here are all participants for our first retention committee and it's been super exciting to work with them. Not having the committee before is really great because it just opens up the doors, we can kind of do whatever we want to do. No parameters necessarily, so it's been lots of brainstorming, lots of talking and really they are the participants who've taken the action in terms of what we're doing. So the purpose of the retention committee is to gather information from the staff regarding the strengths or areas of improvement that we can see as a district. And then also establish short-term and long-range goals to improve job satisfaction, which ultimately will, well, we're hoping that that will decrease in the number of separations that we have typically. So our first steps were to decide on what we were gonna do in terms of gathering information. So within the committee, we've talked lots of different things, but ultimately settled on this as a first step. We're gonna do and are in the process of doing focus groups right now. So we've taken it and broken it into six different levels, as you can see here, first-year teachers, this is all based on longevity. First-year teachers, two to five years, six to 10 years, 11 to 15, 16 to 20, and then 20-plus. And the idea is just to get a broad scope of what our employees think in a variety of different areas. Maybe as an example with a first-year teacher is, number one, why did you select us? Why Garden City? What made us attractive? Then moving on to even things throughout the HR office is how is our onboard process or orientation process? So we can talk to them, it's fresh, they're dealing with it and looking at it like that. And then additionally, what does that look for each of those different groups in terms of a variety of different things with activities, community involvement, those kinds of things. So we developed as a committee this group of, or list of questions. So we broke those committee members into groups, they're basically facilitating the focus groups. We've had people, about five to seven people in each one of the focus groups, anywhere from a half-hour to an hour discussion. And that's really all it is, is they're running through these list of questions and they're gathering information at this point. So when we get all of that done with this first round, we'll get together again and that kind of leads me to this next step.
Before we go on, can I ask, go back to that slide?
Sure.
So your focus group is who, your first list of people you had listed?
No, that's the committee members.
Okay, and who is the focus group?
Anybody that fits into like five to seven people that fit into those longevity categories.
Those year frames?
Yes.
Okay, and how were those selected?
Random, like people that fit that.
Did they volunteer or did you guys say you need to be on this?
No, we asked, I mean, we went through and just selected names of people that would fit that and then those committee chairs invited them to participate in the focus groups.
Okay, and then the focus, so how do you, how does the group gather the people to ask all these questions? When's that done and how, how do they know that meeting's happening?
They invited the members, those five to seven members, the chair people invited them to attend the meeting. So they set it up on their own schedule. So of the committee members, they were each tasked with one of those six groups. So they took it on in pairs. And then they had a list of five to seven people that fit into those longevity categories and they just invited them. We're gonna meet Friday at 4:00 for love three to 10, this is the purpose of the meeting, and they just invited them through email.
I'm just trying to graph who's being asked these questions and who's asking them, so that's a reason for my question.
Sure.
I wanted for sure who was on the focus group committee or who was even on the committee, so it's all new.
The list of...
Yeah, you showed me the list earlier.
Yeah, so those are the people that are on the retention committee and so they're the ones that have been developing what this is gonna look like, what questions that we're gonna ask, what's maybe been important through with them and their process, will that be an important question to ask in the focus groups? So we developed all those things, then they went out and then they invited these five to seven people to give their input based on these questions. Yes, sir.
Do you think that that enough input, do you really give you the...
So after we do this first round, basically it's just gonna, it's gonna kind of be a measuring stick for us is are the questions that we ask the right questions? So one of the last questions on there, was there anything that we didn't ask that you want to share? Because maybe there's something out there that they want to just add to that we didn't think of as a committee. So we're gonna analyze all that information, do we have enough information to draw any themes or any particular areas? And then basically it'll be up to the committee to determine if they want to reshuffle and do another round of focus groups, more, five to seven more people that fit those categories and do it again. Or if we can develop maybe a staff-wide survey around some of those themes by changing the questions or whatever it might be that we get from the first round and then doing that for the whole staff. Does that help answer any?
So this is, sorry, can I ask a question? This group is more of a focus on how to retain teachers, not necessarily how to recruit them?
Correct.
Sorry, that's quite a question.
No, yeah, that's exactly it is, you know, it kind of again goes back to job satisfaction. Can we improve job satisfaction for our employees that are here? Are there things that we can do better than we currently are? And so that's kind of what we're trying to ultimately get at, giving teachers a voice basically. And then what can we build on in terms of strengths, are there things that we're doing well? These are the things that we've identified from our staff that we feel like these things are important. Master's reimbursement as an example, that's something that's important, that's something that's kept me around and I would encourage you to keep doing that. So we want to keep doing those things, they're important, but maybe there's some areas that we aren't doing a very good job in. And so this gives the teachers a voice to share back with that group and ultimately we can start to make some long-range and short-range goals on how to get better. Yes, sir.
Are the focus members anonymous for the most part and so the information that's coming back? So I know a lot of first-year teachers and maybe second and third-years are like, oh, I'm not gonna say anything because I don't want to get fired. I mean, are there, are they somewhat protected? So if they say something that could be perceived as negative, that there's not gonna be any type of flashback on them?
Well, there's not gonna be names of responses, but by creating the focus groups, rather than sending out a survey to these people, we felt like that was the right step so that if you get an answer to a question, if that leads to more information or more questions, it gives them a chance to ask that on the spot. So it really is about a conversation with five to seven people about this concept of job satisfaction.
Okay, I guess my question is, are those five to seven people comfortable answering the questions fully?
I don't know yet, we're not all the way done, but I'm not attending those and the records are kept by notes from the chair people just as a summary of the group. So if I, if I had the board members answering these same kinds of questions, Mark's response wouldn't be written down specifically. But as a whole, I would walk away with the answers to my questions as a whole. Is this is the summary of the input that we got from these staff members, this is it. And then that will be shared back with the committee as a whole. And again, for us to try to decipher, are there themes or concepts or this question was terrible, we didn't get anything but a one-word answer, that sort of thing. Dr. Carlin?
But there won't be anything that says, Mark said, doesn't matter.
Correct.
It might be one of the participants responded this, but you won't individually identify.
Absolutely, that's correct.
Are there, there's no principals in these focus groups, listening to the asked questions of the teachers, are there?
Yes, there is. Yeah, there's committee people that are administrators, that are teachers, that's the committee groups and then they also become the focus group chairs, if you will.
Well, I would think that having the focus group participants be frank and very upfront about the things that they're thinking about when they make a retention decision is absolutely basic or critical to you all getting the kind of information that you need that might result in some changes so we can retain the teachers. So I think if focus group participants are reluctant to share information that they might feel or feel uncertain about verbalizing some things that maybe are on their mind and would make a difference in their retention decision, you probably need to think about adjusting it in some way so that, so that that's not weighing on their mind when they, when they give you those answers. Because the report or the information that you get is only gonna be as good as what people genuinely feel. And if they feel uncomfortable by asking you or telling you that information, they're not gonna mention it and we'll still be in the same position we are now, which is not really knowing why people aren't really doing something.
But we're giving them a voice, it's not, it's by, I guess, invitation or being a volunteer in order to share that. And because you're right, this is a very important issue, but we're giving them the opportunity to share. And if they don't want to participate, and maybe it's the scheduling or they don't want to come and sit down in that situation, that's okay too. But we are, I guess, delivering the invitation as this is something that we're looking at that's really important to our district and we're inviting you to come and share at all different levels, good, bad, indifferent. Because that's how we're looking at this information is good, bad. Are there things that we're doing good, certainly want to hear those too because we want to continue with that. But if there's things we're not doing, this is the opportunity for people to come and share so that we can address them. And not just being keithoed in the deputy superintendent addressing, there's teachers on this committee, there's administrators on this committee so that we can look at it as a whole and try to make some decisions that may impact that retention or separations.
Well, I just feel like it's probably a little bit different situation if you're a teacher trying to provide what really would be useful information to you with your true feelings on the subject as opposed to telling someone, you know, just tell us what you really think. And, but the difference in your position and their position is probably a little greater than they would be comfortable sharing it in many persons. So I think we just really need to make a lot of efforts to make sure that the information we get is what they feel and that they are not holding information back, which I think is probably the natural inclination when you have administrators and teachers. I appreciate that it's apparently non-attribution and some semi-anonymous format, but that's not always felt when you're the one being asked the mission. So I think I'm sure that we're trying to make the circumstances such that we can enhance their ability to speak frankly, because that's really what we need.
And Gina, I certainly will be sensitive to those, to those issues. But I think one of the things that I have seen personally from a building leader is when we do surveys, anonymous surveys, and you get comments back from those surveys, a lot of times there's a, there's a next question there that you don't have the opportunity to ask. There's something to dig deeper in to identify a potential issue, but when I just capture that in a comment box, sometimes that's difficult. Because you don't know what, you know, what is this leading to or coming from. And so that's again, why we've at least initially started with the face-to-face contact is so that we can have those roundtable open discussions to see. And again, we might do that again, we might do something that's a survey as an example, just because we have a lot of people in the district. And so, you know, capturing that in a face-to-face conversation is certainly gonna take a lot of time. So maybe it is something that's better that's handled through a survey, but we'll continue to obviously work on that, try to give as much information as we can.
So I think the success of this is gonna be when other staff who aren't involved in your focus group see what happens or doesn't happen with the participants in your focus group. I think having more information is always better.
Agree? Dr. Carlin?
I'm gonna jump in here. The goal here is really to help us understand why people come here, why people choose to stay, why people choose to leave. You know, we've done exit surveys for a long time and we get some information from that. One of the questions is, has that given us enough depth of information to really understand this? But for 28 years in this district, our retention rate hasn't changed that much. We've had a 12% to 20% turnover rate in this district as long as I've been in the district. And I, I guess, I hope people see this as the administration wants to take a deeper look. We want to understand what is important to people. Now, are we gonna get all the answers? Is this gonna fix, change our retention rate to 3% in a year? No. This is a first step in helping us, I think we've tried to get teachers involved in this to really help us have a better understanding. You know, what made that person who's been there 20 years decide they were gonna stay here more than three, four, or five? What's making that, what's making a big impact on that new teacher that's, makes Garden City look like a place they might want to continue to have their career? What has, what's keeping that seven, eight-year employee who has other options in their, in their career? What's attractive to them about staying in Garden City? I mean, the potential here is for a wealth of information to help, to help us understand more about what's important to people. And, and, you know, again, this is a first step. It may be once the committee starts gathering information that there's other things that we need to do. But right now, it's really, my goal of this is for us to deepen our understanding of what's important to our employees at these various levels. So certainly some people may choose to participate, some may choose not, but there's no consequences for participating or not participating. It's simply an opportunity to help us understand what's going on and what's important to people. But with 620 approximately teachers, you know, there's a diverse set of reasons why people make these decisions. So I think that's just the background, that's the purpose of structuring things the way we're doing it.
And I'll just make one more point, I have the committee members' names up there. It's not administratively heavy, there's three administrators out of all of the committee members, there's three administrators involved. The rest are teachers. Yes, sir.
Do other districts do something similar like this? Have you seen other research or even across the country, not necessarily in the state, that does this type of evaluating?
Not that I can find in terms of a process. So like exit surveys, things like that, yes, something very similar to what we're currently doing, but not in terms of sitting down, doing interviews, doing things like that. Not that I'm gonna find it. If you'd like to steal it.
Oh, I appreciate that you all and all of these committee members are spending so much time on this because finding out at an exit survey somebody is already left out doesn't help us improve things that maybe we could have changed to keep them here. I think this is the best thing to do at this point and the right step to take. So I hope we're able to gather as much accurate information as we can and try to make it, make it the best place and enhance us to work, so.
Agreed.
Can you send me that PowerPoint, I'd like to have it for my reference.
Sure.
Send it back.
You want it digital, you want it hard copy? You want it hard copy?
No.
Okay, yeah.
No, they're mine. You'll send that to me tomorrow morning, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any questions? Thank you so much.
Thanks.
I'm excited about it, I think it's great. At this point, do you have more discussion with your department to look through?
I goofed about the legislative copy, it's the Saturday or last Saturday. Except for February, it's the third Saturday of each month.
I'd just like to challenge all of us to do a site visit for one of the pilot programs. I mean, this was our initiative and we've had a lot of people step up to try to gather data that we've asked them to gather. So if there's seven pilots and there's seven of us and each of us do one, I think that would go a long way on supporting the teachers that are supporting our initiative.
That's great, thank you.
Just, I don't want to go without being said, I realize there's sacrifices that the district takes sometimes for Steve being out of town to go up to the legislature. But he provided testimony this last week and I was able to tuck in on that. And when their working budgets in the House and in the Senate, obviously, we just want to be sure that they have our perspective out here, particularly, you know, with our unique demographics and, not really that unique, but percentage-wise it's unique. Also though, very similar to liberal and Dodge. And so for Dr. Carlin to be able to provide that testimony and specific numbers and specifically on the bill where there's a proposal to rely on census data, and Garden City's census data has sort of got a reputation for not being good. And particularly as it relates to some of our at-risk populations. And so to get that information out there and have the chairman of the committee say, we know your situation in Garden City, that's reassuring to me that our message... know your situation in Garden City, that's reassured to me that our message has been conveyed. So, that's good stuff. And I thank Dr. Carlin for doing that. And KJ, KJ was there as well.
The district has a table at the Chamber banquet, and the date escapes me already.
March ninth?
March ninth. So, if you are interested in attending, please give Joanne a call before the end of the week.
The top, the speaker's talking about cybersecurity, so it should be interesting. And especially when we're talking about trying to get corporate members to help with things, I think it would be very helpful if we, if we had a presence there. So, I encourage you all to go. That forest's good. Culinary arts people aren't being the ones to cater, but it'll be good food anyway.
The ten quarters.
Yeah. Anyone else? Looks like our next board meeting will take place on Monday, March sixth, at six P.M. in this room. We're, we need a motion to go into executive session.
Madam President, I move that going to executive sessions for thirty minutes for matters related to employer, employee negotiations, whether or not in consultation with a representative or representatives of the body or agency. And we go in at a time at eight twenty P.M., thirty minutes, and come out at eight fifty P.M.
For a second. All in favor, please raise your hand.